Good afternoon, everybody. We would like to call the Victoria County Municipal Council meeting for Monday, January twenty-second, twenty-two, quarter order. Just prior to open the meeting, we would like to acknowledge this meeting is being held in Nunamaki with seven traditional districts of the Mi'kmaq, the ancestry alongside the territory of the Mi'kmaq people. So with that, meeting as a call to order, we had circulated the agenda to you prior to the meeting. You had a chance to review that agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda for today's meeting?
I know you accept the agenda as presented.
It has been moved by Councilor McNeil. Do we have a second, please?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Gordon, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm reminded, motion is carried. So our first item for council today is we have District Commander Josh Leach with us from the RCMP, responsible for Victorian County. So he needs to give a voluntary report. So welcome, sir. Happy New Year, and we'll turn the floor over to you.
Well, thank you for your time. I was gonna give you the quick year-end snapshot of where we're at in the district policing-wise. I can start with our staffing. We have run about thirty-three percent vacant for the past year. That thirty-three percent vacant is not translated unless police officers on the road backfill their shift with overtime, reallocating members. So the actual working hours, you know, more or less what you're paid for, you're actually getting those police officers on the street. It's just been your core, posted to the community, within your working parameters. You've been short as a result of off-duty sick, long-term. We have one member who's administratively always in work still, and right now we have two actual, what we call, hard vacancies. Both of those have backfills, which one is actually, you realize, this coming June the twenty-sixth, and the other one will be filled mid-February. The meeting team leader in Inish, Bobby's been gone, and Madison's gone, has moved to another division, and Bobby transferred to another division. So we're slowly backfilling all of those permanent positions, but it's still temporary with overtime. Dropping service hours and manpower hours on the streets. The total files for the year, just under twenty-six hundred, which looks up to a hundred-and-eighty-one, a hundred-and-eighty-one cases per member. And then I have included, you know, I have to be a statistician for some of this to make sense, just some of our year-end numbers for the year with the handles that I gave you. What I'm trying to show is where we are versus where the rest of the neighboring districts within the RCMP app. We also refer to our stats as garbage in, garbage out. So if things aren't properly entered in the computer, they come out improperly as well. There's just no way to fix, unless we go back and individually fix every single number and staff to make sure that this is the one-hundred-percent true snapshot of what we're at at the end of the year, and it takes months for it. Sometimes we go back and correct what we call data quality errors and things like that. So this is, I would say it's the rough shot as opposed to the dead set exactly what's happened the last year. You can see on the found and occurrences. Occurrences to us means that, yeah, definitely a crime took place, whether it led to charges, alternative measures, or went unsolved. We're saying that events took place. Us versus surrounding districts, you can see our line red there, relatively flat. We're maintaining where we're at, and I can go through every single chart, but at the end of the day, what really matters is the numbers on the back sheet. It is our total found criminal offenses, and whether or not they increase the stats or not. You can see down at the bottom, two thousand and twenty-two, led to twenty-nine founded charged criminal files. This year, we're at thirty-four. An increase of five says an increase in seventeen to eighteen percent overall crime, but it's five new files that were founded for your charge criminal offenses. So at the end of the day, we're more or less maintaining the exact same level of call volume and things like that. Our hiring times are always in the summer when we have lots of tourists, the weather's nicer, and you can stay all night, and obviously it slows right down for the dead winter, or long fall, or early spring, or whatever we're calling what we're going through right now. Is there any questions on the stats? And I know I breeze through it really quickly, but it's something, I mean, go through it line by line and see, you know, if we have an increase sometimes of one certain type of offense, that can lead to an increase of, you know, a hundred percent or minus a hundred percent. So it's hard to read the percentages with any kind of thinking it's significant. So if you had zero the year before, and then you had one, well, that's a one-hundred-percent increase. If you have four of those occurrence types, now we're at a four-hundred-percent increase. It doesn't mean that we're living in a flawless county. It's just sometimes it's the way stats work, and when there's so few stats to go with, the increases or decreases are substantial.
So if I mean, when it's green, it's okay?
Green? A green means there was a reduction.
I was red.
Red means there was an increase year over year. Some of it is stats keeping that, like I say, when the system's garbage in, garbage out, if the stats go in wrong, they come out wrong, or we lose them. So it's even hard to say this is the dead set accurate end-of-the-year snapshot, because it will take us months to get all our data quality errors fixed.
Josh, here you have two different columns. Over here, for mental health, it says increase one from one to nine, but over on the other side, it says a hundred-and-eighty-five, a hundred-and-eighty-three. What's the difference from one side to the other?
So one is the entire district of northeast North Scotia, and the other one's just us.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's, you've noticed a big increase in mental health?
I haven't noticed one. It all depends on how the members, we call it a uniform crime court, how they score the files. Some files will score as a mental health act file, and others will score as a disturbance or a mischief, and really it wasn't a mental health-related issue. But then it would fall into criminal side of things, even though there's a person who might have been taken to hospital or made in crisis or something like that. So that's the garbage in, garbage out of our stats.
Okay, yes, I understand.
Duties in the eye of the holder, they felt things across disturbance, they scored that way. In reality, it ended in a person losing the crisis, and then it caused a disturbance. But they scored it the other way.
Understood.
So then it takes those times to surprise the NCOs to go through and try to clean up our statistics so that they're more accurate, they more accurately represent, you know, the nature of the crimes.
Okay. With mental health, is there any other training that the RCMP is receiving or anything to do? It seems to be an increase in it. I'm just wondering if there's any extra training going on or anything that the RCMP are doing to deal with, does mental health?
Yeah, we teach crisis de-escalation training, and then twice a year, we go on, we call it law training, but it's our, our basic skills, research, education. And in that, we do a lot of scenario-based training, which is in the recent force training, which is also part of de-escalation training as well. So it's kind of more hands-on, just the online video-based, what is reading law through and that. So is there not training? No, but there is quite a bit of training, especially now in that area. And this is policy changes as well, like how we respond to wellbeing checks, third of all, two-member responses to them. North Scotia has a mental health crisis support team that we can now tap into. It's, for us, it's a phone call. Unfortunately, it's only in the Halifax region that you get the in-person team. We still now have a full-time team that we can consult with and help them, help us determine course of action, how to deal with increasing the crisis. It's, it's increasing, but the names aren't changing, if that makes sense. Sometimes the frequency's increasing.
Yeah.
We don't have a whole host of thirty young people popping up. We tend to repetitively deal with the same sometimes.
No, appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor McNeil has a question.
Yeah, thanks, Josh. I'm just wondering, other go?
Other general occurrences, so it's like a catch-all for work. Yeah, that's gonna be a catch-all for everything else that we've decided. One terminal wasn't any other kind of stash. Sometimes it's just helping that police force serve a piece of labor work, things like that. So it's.
And like motor vehicle offenses, is that not, I just don't see.
I don't include, I include motor vehicle offenses. That would be our motor vehicle collisions, travel tickets. I could provide staff with a snapshot of having tickets, warnings, check stops, and people with that online. How much you can share with council.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor McLeod.
Hi, Josh. Just, and it's my surprise, it's about the drugs before. I know some parents concerned about the drugs around the village, surrounding areas, schools. And so just, if you want to, you know, when you can tell us about what is the situation, you know, some of these things.
So if the drugs are marijuana, they don't, cocaine would be different. There'll be active investigations, because they're active, cocaine investigations, drug trafficking, drug possession, they're more longer-term. You don't see a lot of the one-stop-in-in investigations nowadays. They're intelligence-based, requiring sources, search warrants. There are active investigations in the community. Marijuana now doesn't get scored as a drug by our laws, because it's been regulated.
Yeah, it's hard to talk about.
It would come up as a provisional offense now. So there is active investigations. One of our newest team members, he actually worked in the federal drug section, worked here to talk, and is a subject matter expert in trafficking, I think, cocaine, marijuana. I'd be guessing, I guess further than how many different products that he's an expert in, so he just started with us a month ago, and there's a, yeah, new, new agenda to be developed, what are we gonna do with this?
Yeah, because if parents are coming, they're asking, they want to know what to do. We can see a moral thing to report, right?
I mean, the parents were coming to us and saying that this has to start at home. We can't wait for the police to solve all problems. These parents need to start with dealing with their kids head-on if they think they're getting into cocaine and marijuana. The police are the last stop.
Right, yeah.
Truly the last stop. Yeah, yeah. So that'd be my first suggestion to these parents, is education starts in home, and it goes from there. We would come in on the enforcement side, but I wouldn't be able to get into the nitty-gritty of the ongoing investigations, but yeah, yeah, these parents need to.
No, just in general, speaking, you know, we, the commanding officer, you know, trafficking was driving his, and driving, and you know, just driving, driving, so it's one of the guidelines that we have, right?
Yeah.
Like our major question, you know, the law.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that's the hardest part about drugs. So we suspect what's going on, but nobody who goes to that house phones the police and says, hey, guess what? Guess what I just did, and guess what's still there? So that's the hard part of it for us to overcome. They're all intelligence-based investigations, they're long-term, because this would be like me coming in, I can't get anybody's door, that's huge exercise of police power. It's taking away all your fundamental rights. So we have to make sure that we're spot on when we're upon with these judicial applications with the judge before we go in, they expect rates on its house. So it's a, it's a hybrid, it's meat, and sometimes they take, investigations definitely take longer, complex life, but there is a lot of constitutional protections about so many states.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm outside, I think your tweets, and it helps coming in, so that they can stop, you know, they go, they come usually like that, please, I'm waiting for that. Yeah.
Thank you, Councillor. Councilor Patterson.
Hi, thank you, Warden. So let's start with Leach. Happy New Year, and hopefully twenty-four will proceed a bit better. With the recent events in Big Birdore, actually, the alleged homicide a couple of weeks ago, and the previous, this is probably six months, eight months ago, where a person had weapons and ammunition and so on. There's been a lot of talk in the community about public safety, I guess. You know, people, it's, it's, they watch too much television, I guess, first of all, but, you know, these events, we're used to seeing them in the big cities, we're not used to seeing them in small rural areas in Victoria County. And I guess my question is, what can the community do to assist, I guess, the RCMP in, in these situations? You know, how to handle them, I guess, the aftermath of them sometimes, and maybe even some form of prevention over there?
Well, prevention is hard on the two different things you're talking about. It would have had to have been the suspect's parents or family, only this didn't before it happened, we're talking about the weapons of the RCMP, you're a former assailant of a house. For the homicide in Big Birdore, prevention would have had to have started so many years ago, unfortunately, with the people engaged in it. It was just, it's such a complex question. I think you need a criminologist to sit down and talk about starting from the day you're born, and how to not go down a path that leads you to where the three he wound up. Public safety-wise, unless you're close associate with any of these people, you'd be just fine. That, the homicide, it was very intent aim to that, very, very small soul for, it certainly wasn't a random act or anything like that. And the fellow that farms again, must see where a close associate of his is, and do something. There's, there's, there's no greater broader public safety concern, I would suggest, over these things. Unfortunately, what we perceive to be a rural, quiet, affluent community is not immune to crime. Things that happen in cities do happen in rural areas as well. It just seems like, obviously, when it's, you know, the neighborhoods, you know, the people involved, things like that, it's more shocking. It'd be nice if the news reported on every baby that was born, and every kid that graduated university and high school, but that doesn't sell, so we report on every failure, every disaster, things like that. So that's, there's no newspaper that really sells good news, they're just selling tragedies and terrible things. So it feels like it's a lot more concentrated than everybody is. That would be the second homicide in two, in three years now that I've been here. It's a bit higher than the population should have, but I wouldn't say statistically out of control or anything like that.
Just pre-lead with that, too, that's, and, and this is a complicated question, too, I think. The RCMP obviously has protocols and procedures for communicating with the public. And when, I guess, what I'm seeing is if people don't get information that from a trusted source, they'll make it up, and it becomes on social media, and, you know, that just takes off, and so on and so forth. So I, I guess, this is from the community's point of view, and you may be aware of this, I'm sure, but the public feels that they should be given some information or more information, and I realize that, you know, you're constricted by what you can do or say or whatever, but if that's, if we could just kind of keep that in mind, that, you know, for example, an alert might have been, and this was suggested to me, that an incident did occur, but there's no need to shelter in place, everything is under control, you know, blah, 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 whatever. That, a more reassuring message than, than you would usually get that there's a suspected person, you know, we see them on TV all the time, police, we are in the dangerous, and so on and so forth.
That would open the door to us learning every single day, at all hours of time, all the time, we were to work off rumor, whatever Facebook says, or Twitter, or whatever people are on. When we're alerting on problems, we're invading people's devices, their TVs and everything else, and I'm just, it's just not reasonable. Alert, whether it's an actual risk, there is a, quite a process to go through, because why should the police or government have the right to just invade all of these things? So it's a very stringent process to go through to alert, and couldn't do it based upon Facebook or things like that, simply because people are sharing rumors that are true, so people need to get off Facebook and sort it out, and it would overwhelm the system. We send out alerts, people start dialing nine-one-one, ask questions, and then nine-one-one calls don't go through when there's real emergencies, the chaos these alerts cause for ambulance fire, and the risk is worth trying to satisfy a handful of residents who get their news from Facebook and chat rooms and things like that. It's a, I can try to find a matrix that's used to decide whether or not to alert, but it's, it's very stringent because of invasion of other people's devices in their homes, waking them up in the middle of the night, eventually, things like that, yeah.
Yeah, just a final point, too, and I, I think it's clear that you can know, in no way jeopardize the investigation or whatever, you know, and that's, that's, that's your job, to make the investigation as clean as possible and put the bad guys away, kind of things.
Yeah, that's the hardest part. So, you know, that specific file unfolded in a very unusual way for us, just the manner in which it first came in, and then the middle of it, and then the end of it. So it was difficult, without having any facts to put out, it's hard for us to put out, it would be speculative until we had facts, which is why things go so wrong, you know, perceived to take so long to roll out. Plus, I respect the fact that all these people were innocent until they decided, according to law, that they are, you know, what's alleged to have been done. And then there is, you know, everybody's worried about themselves, worried about the family, and of the victim, they deserve to be told before anybody else what's going on, what the direction is, and things like that. So we do have an obligation with the victim's family to make sure that they're dealt with appropriately, before we try to satisfy masses and their need for information as well. And it's generally a consideration which people don't have, is what about me, well, what about the victim's family in this case? And us making sure that they are dealt with hands-on first, and are given the updates prior to having read about it on Facebook or in the news.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Any other questions or comments? Josh, please, here. Deputy Warden and then Councilor McNeil.
Just two things, Josh. First of all, I want to say, I've been here sixteen, my sixteenth year, and I always hear complaints from the RCMP and not being around with one of them. But I gotta say, even the last couple of years since the crew that you had in Inish have been phenomenal, I haven't had a call. So I, and I, I see the members being out with the community, interact with them closely, and a lot of visibility at the units in the area, so I think it worked. I just wanted to know if you could push that on to the new members, who are just moving into the area, that make sure they take the time to get out and know the community, and talk to the people, and if they talked to, I think it was Dickson, was there before, talked to him and see what he did, because whatever he was doing was definitely working, it's greatly appreciated, but just kudos to the members of the last couple of years. Like I say, didn't hear any complaints, which is, which is great. The other thing is, a number of times, probably three or four times in the last two or three years, the RCMP have assisted the fire departments with injured hikers, lost hikers and whatnot, back in mainly in Parks Canada, but in back of the sea lodge in the Highlands. I know you got some new snowmobiles, I'm just wondering if the new members are training on them. Is there any chance those units could be put in Inish, maybe go over the Highlands on a regular basis, just to get them a little more experience? Right now, we have a ton of snow down north, there's not much snow anywhere else. I'd just like to see them getting the experience, in case we do need to call on them for assistance, if they get some experience on those units, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Councilor McNeil, you have another question?
Yeah, just a couple more questions. Auburn and Radford, if you can speak, give you a mic, please. Thank you, Councillor. And just one, I have, if there could be more presence, especially coming up to the spring, you said, you said, especially in the fall, it's going to break in, seem to increase more in there, and so if you could add a little bit more presence, especially this time in the spring, great. And another question, you, you said thirty-three percent vacant rate for the last year, and it's being backed, like, and maybe you don't know this, but budget-wise, does that increase our budget towards the RCMP, because we're paying overtime for people to be backed in?
No, so the beauty of, this is one of the, you know, a few bonuses of the contract with us, is it's in place, and the price, as far as I know, and I don't want to promise to those people who sell themselves, budget officers, the price is the price. So things like the homicide, those are very resource-intensive matters, especially for rod, dog services, you go from headquarters, you know, if that, that's, I don't want to call it an insurance plan, but it's an all-in-one price, and everything comes with it. So there's been a significant amount of money spent on that, a significant amount of money spent on backfilling the victim's positions, paying for traffic, things like that. The ratio would remain the same, it should be part of the, we're not in an administrative leasing services agreement, but there's a bailback in the province, but it's part of the original leasing services agreement, and it's, whether it's short in one place, it comes from somewhere else, we are, we reallocate some of the salary dollars for members that aren't working, they can be reallocated into, my pocket days, but there is a, a way that we need, yes, some of the salary dollars back when I was at our work, and I'm reusing that. But at the end of the day, it should increase cost and net value and all that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor. Any other questions, comments before we?
And I should clarify, though, some of those vacancies are in the community tripartary agreement, which is separate of the PPSA and the Police Authority now as well. I look at it as a district as a whole, with a degree of sentiment to the vacancies, used to be in the CTA, though, in the back.
Just a quick comment, so you provide us with the stats for the local area, so they look fairly good, as far as I can see, as far as being safe to you, even a little bit. How do we stack up compared to other communities, values, or other communities, systems, or stuff?
We'd be, you know, anecdotally, we're good friends with the Sergeant Ridge County.
Yes.
They're a bit busier, and I wouldn't say crime-wise, they're a bit busier, probably just call volume, the proximity from Hoxbury, Orange Center, and the different age of population as well. That's the other thing that we have to look at. I don't want to say, you know, crimes associated to young people, but with young people, young adults, there is more travel in the world, so there's sometimes riskier behaviors and things like that. So crime-wise, our stats are, so they're great, call volume, calls for service, assistance to the public, some of our things are actually higher than other communities, and it is due to the age of our population as well. So it's, it just event overall, this remains one of the safest places I've ever worked, there is the blips, there is the homicide, which I know it says there's two, there's two files on it, it doesn't mean there is two homicides, there's just one, but that's the garbage in, garbage out of statistics keeping. We opened a file, and the other shit that came, took it over, opened a file as well. So now, until we fix that data issue, it'll say there's two, and there are only one. I would say that, you know, our comparative district would be Geisbrock, which is another place that it's very similar to ours, and statistically, we don't have university, we don't have, we don't have a large industry private town, so you don't have lots of excess money maybe going into drugs or alcohol, or that spin-off that comes with that. So we do enjoy having more mature populations.
And I, just before you leave, I just want to thank the RCMP for the reinforcement and the support over the years while we had a battle to get the speed limit reduced, still the X number eight, so we finally got that down and set it, yeah, after twenty-three years of requesting that change to be made, and you guys for your support through that process. So please, if they finally recognize the need to do the process, recognize the need to do that, and appreciate your support and your time with that as well. So with that, I think that, thank you very much for your report today. We look forward to you coming back in another four or five months, and we'll get you another update. We look forward to you coming back in another four or five months and providing another update. Um, and, uh, Happy New Year to you and your staff.
Thank you. I know, um, I heard, um, there was, uh, you know, there might be a need. It doesn't have to be every four or five months. It's bi-monthly or monthly. It's just a matter of some message. And, uh, you can show up and produce whatever, um, this will be next call.
We appreciate your time. Thank you very much. So we move on to the second item on the agenda. We have invited Kate Redden to Victoria Regional Centre for Education here, the Susan, uh, Lewis McDonald are here. So we'd ask you both to come forward. While they're rolling their chairs up, I was neglecting to mention that our provincial advisor from the Department of Municipal Affairs is here today. Ross McDonald, former Victoria County resident. So welcome as always, Ross.
Thank you. Happy New Year, folks.
Glad you could make it home.
My cousin of mine, I'm by her.
That's right. And if Lee Ross is your cousin, it's great. Welcome to you at the Victoria.
Who's your father? Who's your father?
So, I'm sorry, Lewis, that you don't have any Victoria County. Welcome as well. So we're gonna turn it over to you folks. I know that council has a number of questions, usually relative to their districts. But turned over to you for some open comments. Both Lewis and Susan, so go ahead.
Sure. Uh, we're happy to be here. Thank you for inviting us. Um, I'll mention a couple of, oh, that's on, I said, you should be one of the top here. I was, I was middle school principal, so my voice carries. Um, a couple of new things happening within, um, Victoria County. Um, several things from the Department of Education have happened. One, uh, they wanted us to hire what they called a permanent sub or a sub in an area. So Rankin School with the Narrows has what we call a permanent sub, um, substitute teacher who's hired just to look after Rankin. And I think so far this year, there's only been two days when that person's had to go somewhere else. So the purpose of that is to ensure that there's a sub because all areas don't have subs. And Rankin was chosen because, um, there were several subs to go there. Um, if we had chosen North of Smoky, we'd have taken someone from existing sub pool. And so it could really have helped our problem. So that's why we went with South Victoria and it's worked very well. So this is the first year we've had that. Um, and if we had someone, the problem with North of Smoky is getting someone a place to. So that's really, um, tricky for us, but it's working really well in South Victoria. So that's new for this government and new for us. So that's, um, that's kind of exciting for us. Um, so again, something else too, and it's coming up, I can't remember now what it was, but I'm sure it'll come to me. Outside of that, um, the seven schools in Victoria County, I think are doing well. Um, our enrollment is, um, staying fairly consistent and, um, programming is still staying fairly consistent. We have moved the base for Schools Plus from our room unit in Inish to the deck. Again, it's a housing problem. Um, we cannot find a place for our social worker to live. So the services will be the same, but she was in Inish or in that area and she can't find a place to live there. So, um, housing is a concern for sure. So that's, um, just a couple of things that, um, kind of were on the top of my head. I know, um, you have some concerns with busing and Lewis is one of them. That's why Lewis is here. We cannot bench and busing and what we've done, we hit lots of, um, job fairs and expressions of interest out. We actually had one in the deck, um, and didn't get anyone to show up. Um, there was one where Smoky, we had a fight over the interest.
Yeah, so for, for transportation and, uh, I mean, operations in general, we, uh, did have, um, and we saw it coming where there was going to be several vacancies. Uh, so we did host a job fair, uh, in Mills Harbour in June. Uh, it was fairly well-attended and we did get some people up there. So that was good. Um, and as Susan mentioned, we had one in the deck in, in September, which was not attended. It was disappointing. But, uh, but we tried and, uh, postings remained there. So, uh, since then, we have been able to fill our vacant operations positions in the deck. Um, we had a significant busing problem in the fall, North of Smoky, where there was more than several cancellations, cancellations of bus runs. There was a few in the bedak area, but not, and, and everywhere actually, but not nearly as significant as North of Smoky. Um, in, in and around November, um, we did complete a training process for three bus drivers, uh, North of Smoky. They, uh, we sent our trainer up there for two weeks and brought three people from class five licenses to class two B licenses, uh, onsite. So, um, happy to say that other than our school cancellations, uh, we haven't had to cancel, uh, bus, a bus run since December up there. Uh, there might have been one, very rare one, but, uh, it's been only pretty good for the last two months. Um, we, we've also published, uh, a long-range notebook that deals with all schools. So we think it's, it's organized by families rules. That's on our website. Uh, enrollment is fairly steady, but there is some staff statistics data in the long-range notebook that look at population trends in general. So, um, and, and we need to take into account, like, some, if there's industries or if the modern view, it's like, what will that do? So, um, I would, I would invite everybody to, to look at that document because we, we take information from our own, um, uh, forecasting software that looks specifically at birth rates. But also it, it, it takes into account just stats can, population trends. So there, while it's, it's steady, there may be a slight uptick as well. Um, past ones in the schools, uh, they're okay, it's containable. Um, a, a good uptick if it happens, um, it's something that all is wrong here.
And that's not unique to Victoria County. The same thing is happening in Kickratt County as well. Um, we've actually had an increase in population in our schools in Kickratt County over the past two years. A lot of it's immigration. Um, and the cancellation buses is not unique to Victoria County either. We've had buses canceled because we can't get someone to, to drive. We've got one of right now in the Sydney Borough area. So, um, it's not necessarily because you're just so isolated. It's happening. And it's against, if you're ever sitting around a provincial table, it's a provincial concern. I heard at my table. And it's very new for us not to be able to get people to fill in, right? Very new. And maybe not North of Smoky, but on a provincial level, hard to find people to move to work. So it's, um, since COVID, uh, that's been a concern in classrooms as well and, um, with all of our staff, not just buses. So it's, it's new and it's different.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments from both. And then we're open to questions. I know that some of councillors have district-specific questions. And perhaps we'll start with councillor McNeil.
Well, thank you.
Just a reminder, turn the light on.
The issue of busing was a concern in the past years over Rankin, especially, uh, on the, and, uh, it, it had to do with, uh, Jay Boswell's and I thought it was the bus company. We had the Department of Transportation in last fall and they assured us that that issue was taken care of. Now, like, have you looked at the policy since then? Have the school boards looked at the policy since then?
Yes. So the transportation policy was updated, um, it's provincial policy. Yeah. And it was updated in the fall. Uh, I think it was probably on October or November. Um, it's, it's on, it's on our old type and it's on the rental type. Uh, the issue of road classifications was taken out. So what was replaced with it is, uh, wording around, um, being able to access roads safely. Um, so we, we, we have been applying that policy. We just, there's been a very rural area, uh, on the shore. Um, did have to go check the road and make sure a bus could get down it safely and turn around safely. Um, so where, where these things can come up, we, we do apply the policy.
And, uh, one other issue.
I'll come back.
No problem. I'll come back. Uh, councillor Longgan and Principal Walker, good? I'm good. Councillor Bass.
Uh, thank you, Warden. Uh, Happy New Year. Just a couple of things. And, uh, on a positive note, um, Polydri School has increased its school student population, uh, to the thirty, forty students, up to ninety students now. I think they were at a low sixty-five at one point. And when my rate value topped there, there were two hundred, I think, at the old school. Anyway, but the point being, and, and we've noticed this right across the county, the county's growing. The people, young people staying here, there's young people moving in from, uh, other provinces. And, um, you know, it, it, it really is a good thing to see that happening now. Uh, Susan, I think you're a bit younger than I am, but we lived through the time, Lewis, I'm sorry. We lived through the time of decreasing enrollments and staff changes and that whole thing that lasted forever, it seemed. But I think it's finally kind of smoothed out. And, and it's interesting that you're, uh, using the, uh, I call them permanent substitutes, because we had them about forty years ago too, when there were staffing issues. So it's good to see those, the flexibility of being able to do that, right? Because these problems are not sometimes very easy to solve. Uh, I remember spending hours, literally hours and hours to try to work out some procedures for, um, layoffs that we had those back in, back in the eighties. And transfers of teachers, because student populations were shifting from school to school, just like the wind almost, you know? They were down twenty or down thirty, another school was up ten. It's just, you know, a juggling egg to keep it all together. So, um, like someone mentioned, I think, uh, Deputy Warden, uh, Doc, you mentioned earlier with the RCP, you're not getting any calls, so that's a good thing. And, and I'm not getting any calls. And, uh, I would like to strongly, uh, recommend the principal of Polydri School, Brenda Lavery, for, uh, recognition of the job she's doing. And, uh, she's been excellent to work with. I know even our Celtic Colors concert, which again, I thank you for, uh, you know, and allow us to use the school for that, but that's a very major part of our community. And, uh, Brenda was actually there the first midnight thing at the concert. You know, straightening up and putting the chairs away and so on. So she really deserves any commendation, I think, that, uh, that, in the overall way. Anyway, and as a fellow former teacher, keep up the good work, I mean, you know? And to all your staff and, and everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, chatting.
Good to see you again. No, I mean, yeah, welcome back. Um, couple of things. Uh, thank you for the new sign at Cataplex. It looks really good. Uh, the other one was on the ground for a while. Uh, and the bus drivers, good job there. Good to hear. Uh, can you comment on, I've been getting little feedback on the deep cleaning at Cataplex?
So last week, um, we had an issue at Cadet, uh, high absenteeism of students, staff and cleaners there. Um, we, we did have some concerns that were brought forward and, uh, it was the case that we had people in positions that were, that were upset. So, uh, fortunately, we, we were able to send some, some of our, um, historians and cleaners from other schools up there and they stayed overnight. Uh, and, and there was no school the next day. They really allowed them to catch up, uh, with the clean. So we, we became aware of the issue on a Monday afternoon Tuesday morning. They were out there. We came, they, we came aware of this on Monday. They were out there Tuesday, stay Tuesday night. No school, there was no school Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Hasn't seen those stories.
Oh, we know that. Yeah. So you think there's going to be any more problems with it or?
It, it, if we ran into a situation where we found results, um, uh, short, story of staff, like, none. Uh, we don't have to be, uh, more proactive than.
Thanks.
And on the flu and on, I don't think COVID as well, because I asked, I was, there was a lot of people on sick, so.
Thank you.
Councillor McNeil.
Yes, thank you. Three quick things, uh, probably a couple more for explanation. On my college camp, when I meet Calvary, when there was issues with conveyance. Could you just explain that, how that process works now? So I know that the scoreboard has provided a vehicle to convey the children to the, the next process to the school.
So we, so, uh, there is a very unique circumstance where, uh, there's the students who can go, um, you can't send a bus in and go. So up until last year, there's private conveyance arrangements. Um, Nicole was one of the areas that's seen, uh, folks in, uh, where people were moving to. So, uh, previous years, we went and had two kids, which was very easy to accommodate with somebody. This year, I think there's five and no, there's seven this year. So we did purchase, uh, rather than, rather than making, um, um, arrangements with all families, we purchased a, a passenger vehicle SUV and added a position so that somebody could drive in every day. Um, but then we ran into some circumstances where somebody else went off, said we had no spareers and we had canceled, uh, that one for significantly more time. Uh, but like I said, we are, uh, plenty of those spareers now. We have that canceled since December.
Brilliant. And, uh, secondly, to, uh, curb this, who decides a school is canceled? North of Smoky? Is it the school board? Is it somebody positioned within the community? It's, 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 it's a job that I guess. As people probably said, there's something within local areas that decide the school board.
We're talking to a lot of people up there in the mornings. We, uh, so, uh, transportation, the RCP, a few of our staff members, uh, somebody with EHS. So there's quite a few people, um, that we talk to between five and six in the mornings. Uh, it is difficult to, to get information, uh, because it's such a large area. Um, usually Inish isn't all that bad, but a lot of the staff at each, at each Smoky may live, um, uh, worth of people. So it's, it's, you have to take all those things into consideration.
And lastly is, um, can you explain the housing situation? There are, I've had some people, parents that are subbing at Cadet. Is it, is it right to say that if you have a bachelor of parents, that you can go in and sub classrooms at Cadet? Because some of the parents, they commonly, they say that the people that are in those positions aren't doing what a star would do.
So there's a special, it's called a special permit. Um, and in areas where we don't have enough subs, we'll look for special permits, but they have to apply the interview. Um, so if there's concern about their performance, then we need to know. Because we would work with them in that case. So, um, that's something that if parents have a concern, they should talk to the principal, the principal should talk to us. So those are things that, I mean, we, we get those concerns, believe it or not, even if you're teachers. So those are things that we look all over, but if we don't know, we can't. But yes, we do have permit, um, degrees subbing in areas where there's maybe, we don't have a lot. Um, but we do want to go through the process, and, and so, permit record check, all of those things as well. So, yeah.
Thank you for that advice. Appreciate it.
Councillor McCall.
Mr. Councillor, uh, thank you for meeting. Uh, today the Academy is thriving. Uh, we have a lot of, and some ladies of the name of our security. We appreciate that. And, uh, no, it's just, uh, spring very well. Great. Thank you for that. Yeah. So I was like, no. So, and John, and the rest of the citizens. It's always good to meet the British citizens.
Thank you for having us. I'm not just, our SMP is about what we work very closely with them as well. And we did some training in last year called Eternal Level Service Assessment Training across the region. Our SMP were part of it, as well as youth services and others. And the rest of our staff, all of them staff, and ours will be done in May, and then we'll do a level two. So, and it's about looking at some of the things before they happen, right? Looking at this, and working cross divisions. So we've been working with the R C M P, and we've heard some wonderful things about the R C M P and our research as well. And I sent a letter to them, actually, to the commissioner, among our social, to comment and commend that young woman who's there has done a lot of work with the school, so. We reiterate your comments, I guess, about that part.
Just as we wrap up, did you remember what you were?
Well, no, it was just a comment, too, that actually the school, like, schools, we have still, there seems to be more extracurricular activity going on. Thank you for that, too. For all the, just.
Important.
Yeah.
Especially if you're in these schools, for sure. Yeah.
So thanks for sharing that, John Darby, appreciate that. Glad you're always been doing special. Just a couple of quick things, just around the back school. One is, we're seeing much more activity in the evenings now, and we're going to go open, which is great. And it's, it's almost every night, there's something going on there, so not sure who's responsible. Thank you for that. The other issue I just spoke to Louis, that is very quickly before Counselors sat, we've approved money for a sidewalk that the towns tried to cross the street there, and that's for student and motor vehicle safety. So we've been waiting two years now for the Department of Public Works to have their traffic supervisor walk and determine where this crosswalk should go. So I guess what I would perhaps appeal to the school board is perhaps providing us with a letter of support, supporting the process.
Anytime. Any problem, we, we only have a minute.
Yeah, I know, they did ask when the sidewalk would be permitted, so.
And, and that was all part of the process, but, you know, we thank you for putting the crosswalk down. You know, you guys did it in four months, and we're here twenty-four months still waiting for the traffic supervisor to take a look at that problem. So we will be in touch and I've sent a letter to you, and we'll send it to the Ministry of Public Works as well, to see if we can. It'd be nice to have, the money's been sitting in our budget for a year and a half now, so. Anyway, with that, any final questions or comments for, thank you very much for coming. And I'm glad that you got to see your cousin Ross today as well. All right, thank you, and happy new year.
Thank you.
You got two minutes before I set.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take this to three-minute break, and set up for the next presentation.
Oh, there he is.
You're live.
All right, we're gonna read the V Council, please. We had a, an opportunity, we, the presenters have logged this program. It's quiet in the back, please, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the District Transmission, and we're pleased that Sean Donovan was here today. It's in regards to a demolition on site premise presentation. So we're familiar with this process, as Sean has been here several times before. So we'll turn it over to Sean to take us through his recommendation and the report that he's providing with that. Right, Mr. Donovan?
Thank you for having me. So this presentation, it's, it's for a building that's on two properties. So the owners are Property Recovery Resorts in the property of the two, three, two, six, three, zero, six, Mount Social Limited. The complaint was received in the summer of twenty twenty-three. Property inspection was completed, there's a small shed located on the property. The shed is located on the old property factory, the line goes through the shed. However, it houses the electrical and power supply to the building on the Mount Social Limited property. So a letter was sent to both property owners in September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, requesting them to address the issues with the shed, and have it securely repaired. If they did not complete the work, they were both notified demolition recommendation made result. Both property owners were notified at the date and time of this meeting, on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. So you'll see the shed that's on the property, properties, I should say, as the property line goes through it. So it houses the power for the building on the left. You can see that it's, the door is in place, but it is open and accessible in certain areas. So the building is dilapidated, the structural integrity has been affected. The building is partly open and accessible, and open in certain areas to the elements, and wood rock can be found in certain areas of the building. Two buildings in a roomy and dilapidated condition, and it's in some relation to the neighboring properties due to the exterior finish of the building not being used. So our recommendation is that it appears to be neglected and dilapidated. Meet some municipal government act, is dangerous for unsightly. Therefore, our recommendation is in order to remedy the condition, and if it be an order, be a demolition order issued from Council to the owners, the owners should state to the owners that the building is to be demolished or to be removed or disposed of in the appropriate manner within thirty days. If the property owners fail to comply with municipality, we will complete the work and recover the cost. Any questions?
Thank you very much, any questions before, from Counsel? Yes, sir, if you have.
You say the electricals in that building, that supplies, so if the building is demolished, it's going to happen to the electrical, I guess.
So right now, if a demolition order is issued, that will be between both property owners to rectify the power situation and demolish it themselves. Otherwise, if the demolition order is issued, at the expiration of that demolition order, it falls back in our hands to put it, put the work to tender and complete it. Part of that process, like any other demolition, you would have to go through local power to have disconnection.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Sean?
Yeah, actually, the question that Deputy Warden asked, who did the building belong to? Is there a divine?
That's what, the original letter that I sent to both property owners, that we received a site plan showing the property line going to the building. If the building is on both lots, our assumption is it's between both, we have to notify both owners. It's a unique situation, in my years of doing this, I've only come across a lot of the time. So yeah, it's definitely, that's why the initial letter instead of a recommendation was to both property owners to see if we could have this building securely repaired, so that, you know, we didn't end up where we are today. Nothing was ever done with that, so like I said, the initial letter stated that the result may be a demolition recommendation based on no work being completed in the remaining current state, so that's what we're asking.
What's inside the building that's, that's the power from this other old building?
It is the motel.
It is a motel?
It is a motel.
Okay, so if you demolish, it's cutting off the power to the entire motel?
To one part, yes.
And there are reusable rooms and everything right now?
I believe so.
Any other questions or comments? We've heard the recommendation of the District Planning Commission from Mr. Donovan. Is there anybody here to speak against the demo, but the recommendation for demolition? If you'd like to come forward, please state your name and state your case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Catherine Kennan, and to answer the question that's already asked, the number company is the Federal Home and True Resort. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to this matter. I have a letter from the owner, President, that is allowing me to speak to this matter as we have. He is a countryman now, she can walk that pretty far. This particular matter started a couple of years ago. And what brought it to our attention was that Mr. McCollie had the trees fall cut. The trees were overgrown on the building in the back, and I'll be honest, I did not notice the state of the building. I was first contacted by Dave McKendie, who came over and asked me to secure the building, because the door was off. So I had staff to over and secure the door, I had him to screw it in, and that is on. In a quote letter saying, you can be accessed to this building, kind of Federal Home and True Resort, which at the time was operating seasonally open at all times. So then I heard from Mr. McCollie, who told me he had plans on that property to put more buildings. And he told me not to worry about the building with the electrical units in it, because he had plans to put it on the wall in watertight units on the back of what is known as the Aries Motel. So that's that. I didn't hear anything for some time, and later I was called to go to the building by Mr. Brad McDonald, who is an associate of Mr. Scott McCollis. I went to the building, and he proceeded to tell me his plan, and I had absolutely no choice, but to go along with his plan to have to remove our wiring in the building and move the building off his property. I tried to talk to him about moving shorting the building, because the electric was very close to the building and more on our property side, but he said that wasn't acceptable. So then I left. I asked for a copy of the survey to show me the line, just so we knew, and I left. I wasn't comfortable, and Mr. McDonald's company. So I had another phone call come in sometime later. He had a member from North Social Power there, was starting to align the plans of what they planned on doing. I didn't go in any with him, and I asked him again for a copy of the survey. I gave him my card and my email address, and he sent me a copy of the survey with broken line. And I simply said, this isn't a survey, this is somebody else's survey. At any rate, I did find out who the survey was, it was a Mr. Steve McDonald's survey, and I got in contact with the surveyor, who was Mr. West Tinkler. I homed him on July the sixth last year, and asked him if that was indeed the property line. He told me it was not, the survey was for the McDonald family. It was just a broken line indicating somebody owns product property, somebody owns the other product property. So I asked again from Mr. McDonald, or from Mr. McCollie. Most of my communication was with Mr. McDonald. I asked him for a survey, and he told me that I couldn't have one. Late in the summer of twenty twenty-three, I noticed a survey crew doing a survey, so I knew it was happening at that time. And so Mr. McDonald continuously was texting me, and I do have copies of all his texts, emails, you should see them, telling me I had to move forward with his plan. At any rate, we waited for the survey, he will not provide me with a copy of it. And he didn't need to, it's public records, so we did get a copy ourselves. And at that time, is when I started to receive very aggressive emails from Mr. McDonald, telling, because I sent him a letter saying we were going to fix the, we were going to shorten it and fix it as per the request of the Eastern District Commission. I have a copy of that letter, if you'd like to see it. At that time, I received both the texts and an email telling me that I could not repair the building, because I was not allowed on the property, and that they had already contacted the R C M P, and should I, or any of the staff in my supervision attend property, that the R C M P will be called, and they will be charged with trespassing. So we wanted to withhold supplies, we had a plan to shorten the building on our own property. My children will not be fighting from their property line. But that way, they can move the pole, and we can still have our electrical unit. The basic thing, the owner, Mr. Wei Chao, and myself feel is, this is un business for Mr. Chen. He bought it himself, on his own, he went two years of COVID. Then we were extremely hurt by hurricane, we lost buildings. And last year, it was really hard, as it was for most people in twenty twenty-three because of the weather. So we didn't have the finances. I did have an electrician look at it and give me the options, what do we do? If this building comes down, we can't lose power to this motel, you know? Because we're losing even more money, and we're just trying to fight catch-up. It would be approximately twenty thousand dollars. Jason, our electrician, he made it. So Mr. McCollie and Mr. McDonald attended our office at one point, and showed us the plan that they had, and Mr. Chao simply said he had no problem with their plan, but that it was their plan, it is their business, and there's no reason why we should have to pay for them upgrading their property and getting more income. We wanted to do overdrive and move out of their way, that building, and put it closer to ours. So what I'm asking the Counsel is to reconsider the demolition and give us an opportunity that we were not. the demolition and give us an opportunity that we were not allowed, because there's signs posted all over there that, you know, come out loud on the property. Give us an opportunity to rectify the property and have it off their land, on our land, and properly sealed according to the Eastern District Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for me at all, or any documents you'd like to see that I have?
I think you're good, thank you, thank you for your time and thank you for your presentation. If anybody's here to speak, you'd better wrap the demolition of the building. Yeah, would you state your name, please?
Scott McCollis.
Thank you, Scott.
The owner of the or the property owner of the, where the building is located, I guess. I guess, in realizing the complications with regard to any capital costs that go into making changes or what have you, being a former owner of Enveram, I know all of them. And certainly, you know, certainly appreciating, you know, Kathy's position. I guess, this all started like a year ago, in twenty-two, actually. So it's almost two years ago. And we went to, you know, communicate, communicated with Kathy and Mr. Wee with regard to, you know, what our plans were. The issue that, you know, we had with regard to how the building was spent. And, you know, even at that point, or shortly thereafter, we offered to, you know, pay for some what needed to happen in order to make this, to make this situation much better than it is today. They made it quite clear that, you know, that's fine, you, that's your plan. Our plan really doesn't include that, and we've got our own plan, and as she has communicated today. You know, it really, you know, has not been with the situation in a very timely fashion, given, you know, given what's, what's going on there on our property. The, we had the property migrated, we had communications from Elliot Fraser, who's our lawyer, to, you know, ensure that, you know, there are no easements that we're not seeing, or that they're, that they're I guess, able to, able to have to feed the building. We've had it spoke by local social power, and they, they've come up with some solutions with regard to rerouting the power entrance to their building. Is there some cost? Sure there is. Should, should there be some cost? Absolutely. The building that's in question is like, I'm not sure twenty thousand dollars would be enough to fix that building up. The power supply in it is antiquated. The, the building is deteriorated to the point where it would have to be reconstructed. So I'm not sure why, what, what their plan is with regard to time and having this all happening. Local social power, they've communicated with, with us on several occasions with regard to options, with regard to the property. I don't think that they have been communicating with Kathy or Mr. Wee. And nor should they, if they hadn't reached out to local social power to, to, you know, come up with a solution for what's happening there. I have a communication from Elliot Fraser, who's our lawyer, who's represented us during the migration of the property. And which I can certainly make available to council. Which implies all of the, any of all of the easements that are associated with the property, none of which are, are through Enveram. And I guess, based on what we have been trying to do over the last couple of years, in getting them to deal with the issue that we are dealing with. And, you know, our, our building is arriving tomorrow morning, Jane Pranig, to, to be able to get that in place. Needs that we need to have the power supply moved as it's through our, you know, the land that we're prepared for. So I guess, in dealing with their request regarding to, you know, additional time. If in fact, council, council decides that, yes, that's a, they haven't had enough time to deal with it, then I would certainly encourage that there be a, a strict time put on during there. Which I think is fully reasonable. And, and, you know, understanding that, that we have been trying to work with them for the last couple of years in order to see this happen. Brad is made up, like a bit of a bandit, certainly is not, but very indicative as far as, you know, this is, this is what needs to happen, this is, you know, we've told you this, given you the information. And it's certainly, you know, not calories made up to be. Yes, I guess, in, in, you know, we concur with the recommendation of the Eastern District Planning to, you know, let's get rid of that building. It's the middle of January right now, the renovation that they would need in order to reboot the, the power supply to that building could easily be done at this time of year. And I'm sure the applaud local social power in order to get that done as well. As opposed to waiting until another season, because we can't take that building out of service, what have you, so. All of what we're doing there is, is very attractive to the, to the area, very attractive to the, to the area around Enveram. I think, you know, it would occur with Kathy, with the condition of their building is certainly deteriorating, anything that happens in that area, so.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions for Debbie Ward?
Sorry. I have more questions for Kathy. Kathy, like, what kind of timeframe would it take to get care of that building if you let Jason look at it? First of all, what length of time would it take? And number two is, have you talked to local social power? Because I know permitting is major issue right now with them to get a permitting.
I have not talked to local social power, except to ask them if power could be, without consent, because it is being, they said they could not. As far as the timeline goes, we were prepared last call, I had the staff, which you know is difficult to get, I had the supplies, I had everything ready to if you could see the inside of the building, everything is on wall wall, so that wall is secure, and the floor under it is fine, I had contractors look at it. So they would be, they called the chop, they would chop it, and then they would put another wall up, and maybe a room for a door to enter. That could have been done last call. As of right now, I'd have to look in to see if there's any, if they could move it, I could have done it then. But they leave me out of the property, and I wouldn't put anybody in that position. So.
Council, I'll run your question.
Well, I, my question is, if, oh, sorry, if you do have somebody that could come and do it in a timely fashion, like in the next month or so, if Mr. McCauley is allowing you to walk on property and do the work? What is my question? Because she says there's no trespassing sign, so they couldn't really go do the work because they're not allowed to walk on.
Sure, I, I would, you know, certainly, if they put together a timeframe and a plan that, that that, you know, works for, works for us, I'm sure we certainly consider it absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we have, we've through the whole process and by the end, and right from, say, less than two years ago, we're going to be doing this next year, or the year after, or whatever. We've been, we've been very upfront with what we're doing, and we haven't been as, communicated as well over that period of time from Kathy, Mr. Wee.
Any other questions or comments? Just to wrap this up, please.
Yeah, good, yeah, one question more.
Sure.
Mr. Donovan, was, was council had the ability or the wherewithal, I guess, to, to extend that, that we did it on?
That's up to council, yes. Our recommendation is that we did this, no shortage.
Your recommendation, Mr. Wee?
Our recommendation.
Yeah. But, but, but I think we've done it in the past, that we extended.
You had it, yes. Okay, so, Councilor Cloud?
So just so then, if she had the time for a period of sixty days to do the job, and she, your party is allowed to, to then, to go to the property, correct? Because I think that is an issue, I mean, we couldn't do nothing because of what's
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good, yeah, absolutely.
This complication of, that, we couldn't hear, that if you have the time right now, for sixty days, and do like double shoot, and the other party can allow it to, for
Provided?
Provide the space for them to do it.
Provided that, that's confirmed, yes.
Of course, yes, I think that is a issue, like so much that I say.
So that is just so we can go shorten the building, keep the areas up on our property within sixty days, right?
Yeah, that will be the standard, isn't it?
Yeah, so if it's that case, you would have to go through, if you say sixty days, it would be demolition order for sixty days. Then it would be on the property owners to apply for, for any necessary to complete it, sign off on it.
So, and just to be very clear, if there was an extension, granted, there is no extension beyond the extension.
I'm wondering, sixty days, is that enough to get the other?
I, I, I'm not going to be here indefinitely, but, but this issue has been brewing for profit close to two years now, so this is, you know, time is of the essence on this, I think, in fairness.
And in fairness, they would have done, had it allowed to.
Well, and again, our role here is just to determine, it's an unsightly building, it's a dangerous building or not, as far as the legal, the logistics around power, the personal side of it, that's not our consideration. What our consideration is, either the building is unsightly or it's not, and if it's deemed unsightly, then we give a certain period of time to have that building dismantled, so. You know, given both sides, I, I, we have to come to some conclusion today. We've already granted the extension to you with as far as hearing for obvious reasons, which were well, well deserved to delay it, but having said that, it's the clock is amendment on this one, I think. So what, what's council's recommendation regarding to demolition order?
Warden, I would like to move that we extend the deadline to sixty days for the demolition order.
On seconded?
Seconded, all favor?
Aye.
Can we just, with that, if you would put in that there, that sixty days and no extensions, ask sixty days for the building?
No further extensions will be granted.
And that building, when it's done, has to meet the
Oh, yes, yeah. I think, I think Mr. Donovan indicated that a building permit will have to be acquired, and that would be, could be expected, and so on, yeah.
And Mr. McCauley has indicated that he is willing to work over that.
And I guess, in consideration for agreeing to an extension to allow the property in order to do it, to do the building, if they would contact local social power with regard to rerouting the power to that new building. Because that power line actually goes right through the middle of our, our property, which is where we're putting a storage facility.
Okay, Kathy, you heard that, you're
Sorry?
So you heard that Mr. McCauley's comments in regards to rerouting?
Yes, he had to contact local social power, have to reboot, and have to leave it outside of the plant for a whole placement. After local social power.
Yeah.
It's already been, it's already been spoke, it's all, it's all in place. You just need to contact local social power, get them to remove it, their service to the building right now, and carry on with it.
All right, we, we had a motion, we had a second, we've had to discuss, any further discussion?
Sort of, please, and then part.
Seconded, moved by Councilor Patterson, seconded by Councilor Long, all in favor?
Aye.
Contrary to mind, the motion's carried, you know, and, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks very much, I'm sorry to take so much time.
Thank you, Sean, you're good.
Thank you.
Sean, you're clear on what that order is?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
So we're going to move on to the washroom report from Camp County.
That's just exciting, that, eh?
Well, yeah, thank you for your time, but I appreciate it. Had a few conversations today, and I'm going to try to be as brief and Yeah, I do have a couple of slides, it's I will say that over the past three or four years working on this, I don't think I've ever anticipated how much time and effort it's been discussing washrooms, thinking about washrooms, visiting washrooms.
That, I've said that so many times. You also have, council's law has a, a, that, Dan asked to, to do this, and you know. It's more detailed than what you.
Okay, so we moved too much delay, I guess, we've, we're a couple of years into, three or four years into our presentation now with regards to our, our operations on maybe washrooms. So the presentation today is just a quick background on where we were when we started this program and where we are today, having basically produced a few, few good, all the infrastructures access points for our community. So as a background of the project, it would have originated through the Social Tourism Icons Program in twenty eighteen. It was about three hundred thousand dollars invested by the province of local social through that program, another six hundred thousand was dedicated to the Seaweed at the same time. And that was meant to increase the washroom access around the county trail. So that was shared amongst the Inverness and Victorian families. And the county's Matten created an alliance brand, so the logos, the style of the signage, the name of the signage is all in concert with each other, so if somebody's traveling with that trail, they recognize where the washroom is going to be and how that integrates. Council had approved at that time the project as a partnership with local community groups or businesses that wanted to be involved in this process. So we used an expression of interest process where we reached out to people in the community organizations and asked if they wanted to participate in this program and what the parameters about that program would be. We, for each location, so we've been acting in addition, and I believe we Uh, we, for each location, so we've been acting in addition, and I believe, uh, we established a committee, basically, that included some staff members, a county member is included, invited, resident, uh, general resident, and the member of Nova Scotia Power Works, Steve McDonald, was invited and participated in those discussions as well, so. Uh, we then looked at, um, signed WU, so we, we worked with the, the requirements of somebody to be involved in this program, and they had to sign a memorandum of understanding with the organization that outlined the responsibilities and the goals of each group. Um, we also had that some common comfort station signage plan, which, uh, we will provide signs to those locations, and they're just, you've seen them on the bed location, but they're not currently in existence, uh, in all the other locations, we've delivered them this summer, but they're not all installed at this point. Uh, our goal was to provide 24/7 year-round coverage, recognizing the, uh, the increase in the winter season and the year-round season. So we accepted expressions of interest based on that intent to be open, uh, to meet our program goals. Where possible, we wanted to provide accessible coverage to those washrooms as well. Um, after that last, uh, and then ongoing consideration for operational funding supports for my surprising cleaning, so. Um, there's some challenges with this when it comes to non-for-profit community groups versus businesses, of course, we'll be able to go back and, and, and. So looking at the current comfort stations that are in operation, um, uh, there's currently five up and operating, so that carries the Stories Misses Association, Gala College, North Island Community Museum, um, there's some people in there, uh, Bay San Lawrence Community Center, and Viti Bean Cafe in English. So the, the first two, the BAFTA and Gala College were kind of self-built, so they were ones who built from the ground up, put in place, uh, as part of the project, tapped into their sewage and water systems and, and evolved from there. North Island Community Museum and Bay San Lawrence Community Center were partnership projects in existing washrooms that lived in those buildings, but there were an opportunity to enhance the building, enhance the washroom, and give a different access level from accessibility for wheelchair discussion. And then the TV and Cafe is the, currently the only independent business partner, um, as part of the project, there's another business in English that was also selected as part of the expression of interest, but that project hasn't performed much progress at this point. Um, and Viti Bean Cafe was an expansion on our current building, which added washrooms to that, that portion of the building. Uh, and also tapping, I think, and operating the central system and over. So if we look at, uh, the breakdown kind of of when they started, obviously, this has been in place since 2019, so it's been growing, uh, 2019 was the one in the deck, because I have the BIC, Gala College was added in 2020, North Island Community Museum, 2021, Bay San Lawrence was earlier, but they had some issue getting some supplies with their doors, so they opened in 2022. And then the TV and Cafe opened in September of this past, last year. Uh, you'll see there the, the funding received as well, so funding received for the units represented the purchase of the, or the building of the unit, uh, any repairs or maintenance required to put the unit in place, as well as some supports given to assist in, in supplies and maintenance over the years that they've been in existence. So you can see the comparisons between ones that have been in place for three and a half years and, and so on, and compared your prices on the investments into those up until this point. Um, when we look at the hours available, I will say, all of this information, we've, we've been up to the groups and had and provided questions for survey feedback, so these are all direct feedbacks from the organizations that came back, so it could be may see some inconsistencies in wording, but that's, that's the feedback that we're getting, any attention to the individuals' desires. Um, so when we look at the Gala College, uh, 24/7, $3.65 a day, again, that is our original goal of the program. That as well, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, I know there's been some, some questions on that, we've heard that, uh, from the public as well, and there has been some, some delays, but there, there's sure as, that accessible washroom is one that's open, uh, 24/7, 365. Um, North Island Community Museum, we have an agreement with them where they would be open during the season that they're open, that building does not keep their water replaced or moved or something. To man that log. And then the response from Viti Bean is down to 3pm, six days a week, when the weather's permitting and when the business is open. So that's, uh, that's the standard that they've set with their, their plan so far.
And Bay San Lawrence, huh? You didn't, you didn't say Bay San.
Oh, sorry, Bay San Lawrence, yeah, 24 hours, 665 a week, these years, well. Um, so why, we asked them all why they originally partnered on the project and what they wanted to get from it, so you can see the need for washrooms on the travel to, on the cap trail, the accessibility of the washroom, and so on. Very important for community offerings, again, the need for washrooms and improving their own facilities, um, and then, you know, consistent right across the board for most of those. Uh, we asked if, if the program actually met their, um, expectations, and we had a few responses on appreciation for the financial support, that a few of the organizations recognized that the supplies and costs of cleaning, uh, were certainly challenges, and we've been able to support them quite strongly through that. Uh, we also see the, you know, North Island Community, uh, Museum noting that it's really nice, the, nice to have the public washrooms available in that community. And, yeah, I don't want to come out of the question, that, the reporting added is the actual answers that came back from the surveys, so you can see the read, where, where, what was, uh, what was explained in this as well. Um, the benefits of the program, we've asked each participant to share what they felt of the benefits, now that they've been involved with the program, so washroom's available to the public, uh, accessibility again, and, you know, better customer service for the overall brand of cap trail. That speaks to what, what I want to see and what, what I feel, um, is important in this program as we go forward. Um, providing visitors and residents with quality pieces of infrastructure, so we hear quite often, the one in bed especially, that it's not only the visitors that use it, but it's people coming to town from the north and coming down north to use that as well. Uh, they say Lawrence Community Center provides, uh, it's really good by what's needed in the community, another asset for them as well for when they're doing community functions. Uh, for Community, North Island Community Museum provided stabilized water supply for their building already, which is a challenge that they're having, so this program actually often fixed that. Improved their washing accessibility, and local business is very happy to have that service, to have direct people to use that, that service when needed. Also increasing visitation to their museum has been a big moment, a benefit to them, but they haven't been able to identify that measure of numbers at this point. Uh, we can see Viti Bean noted the, you know, people have a place to use the washroom in English, and the benefit to the local, uh, contractors that were hired to build the unit, so. Again, alternatively, we all, out from the, one of the top three challenges. It's really easy to see, and I think we felt it in the inquiries we had when people operate in these, is the, the security aspect of the, then the, uh, yearly costs of supplies and cleaning become a comment on almost everyone, all except for water. So you can park your license number, move to Gala College again, a little more of an operation. They say Lawrence had experienced some breakdowns, so they had some additional issues with their sewer lines and whatnot, once the implementation of the washroom, and it's about some challenges that they had faced as well. And some technical problems with the oper, automatic doors, they have problems, Viti Bean, uh, uh, slowed that down, but other than that, uh, mostly the issues were, uh, around cleaning and supplies, so with Viti Bean, there was definitely some, some different messaging coming back on the challenges, that we had, um, heard of support communication from the building inspection process, as well as some consultation around a funding program, that, uh, somebody else in the community, I think, was able to take a package up and she was aware of, so. Uh, we have not gone back to have any conversations around these, so I won't, I won't speak on every act, I'm just reporting the information that was real, I did, but I, I think, an expression of data around the building inspection probably wouldn't be, uh, unreasonable to, to consider as well, so. Uh, the project also exceeded her budget expectations and incurred additional expenses around insurance, uh, pumping fees, heating costs, and data events. We did ask if there was open-ended questions of the operators or any of the suppliers wanted to ask and, and offered them to, to convey those questions around. Um, basically, the Gala College, uh, was interested in, in other, what the other operations are doing, and most of them, I think, it's fair to say, would be interested to know what the other, other operations are doing and how their experiences are going, so this is a report that we will provide back to all the ones that are participating in the program. And Viti Bean had, had just made a comment and asked if, um, you would provide the, the documents back to the proponents, once counsel was informed of the report as well, and we do commit to do that as well. For next steps, and, and my final slide, I guess, uh, find our next steps with the project is basically to finalize the last washroom placements. Uh, we do have a unit in place, and there's been, uh, expression of interest provided in Dingwall, we are waiting on the final signing of the document there, but we also have been heard from another, uh, pro, possible proponents along the North Shore, which is, which is very promising, so should one agreement not go through, we certainly have the other one ready to go. The location that we highly identified as, as a bit-balling operation. Uh, so we'll complete the, uh, comfort center station signage, um, and then promote the locations through some marketing back and, uh, so that people, uh, I will say, we've got Google listings for these locations, put on Google Maps, so if somebody searches, uh, washroom or comfort station within the area county, they will see them on Google Maps, and they receive over 10,000 hits and views on Google Maps, it's, it's a needed one, I think. And then, as always, we'll reevaluate, review and evaluate each year on how those programs meeting the original goals of being operational proceeds from the fact that they disclose.
Thank you for your question. We're going to open it up, any questions, then? Thank you for the presentation, and those of us who've been sitting around the state for a long time, washrooms around the cap trail, we get along standing issues, appreciate it. Great to see you, both of you, to make, uh, accessible to the program, any questions? Uh, Counselor McCollum?
Not, not really questions, just, uh, sorry, not really questions, just for, for my own district aid, I've heard nothing positive. Of all facilities, it's been, it's been great for tourism, it's brought more people, and that it really, uh, put everything that washrooms are, so, just on my district.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, pardon?
Same thing, Dan, I, I know one of the pages is not on this list, our comfort, our comfort station?
Yeah, that's, uh, that's great.
So maybe other people should come down and see how that one is run, and it is, it's phenomenal.
Yeah, a lot of the discussions around the groups in San Antonio's area and Dingwall today, um, are, but what else can, you know, with this, and laundry matter, because TL, the, when you're talking housing challenges and people living home issues and that, that laundry element becomes another area, like the, the beach sites are not, uh, people's, your community.
It's, 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 it's said it's one of the most used laundry facilities.
I don't use it for laundry, but I tend to stop there every time I go around that.
A lot of people do, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Now, Counselor McLeod.
I have a question, uh, just because, uh, the reviews and the, the comments, they put it in Viti Bean, uh, so Viti Bean, in our time, it's, uh, based on ours, we need money in their business, right?
Not Viti Bean, so far, Viti Bean's only been open since September of 2023. Uh, and as an independent business, we can be limited on how we can support that, uh, we are, we did have an agreement with them to put in the central system and connect the waters, building became often functional and workable. Uh, the memorandum of understanding that we signed with each partner details some of the agreements and the discussions around additional funding. And we do so with a nonprofit, who, who are fundraisers in, in their own right, we do work with them, and they, so the goal is they share their bills and their expenses, and what they've spent on cleaning and supplies, at the end of the year, we evaluate that and determine whether we support it.
Let's keep it in mind.
Counselor, please.
Depending on the organization of funds, and again, the municipal government act limits us from actually being able to put money into the original business, and, and, uh, as we heard from North Island Community Museum, it's drawing a hesitation to that, so it could be seen as a, as a greater benefit if you're providing one business a washroom and not.
Sorry, I didn't even catch you on. Counselor McLean, if you want me to click that up.
Uh, thanks, Dan, for the presentation, it is a great program, and, and Cat Crayle has the program too, but I'm wondering eventually would there be such a program that would extend to other areas, especially with, uh, Washington, the port of my own, especially with, there's an agreement for supplies.
Yeah, we had talked about that for replacement, and certainly we're open for that, even through replacement, even if, um, with the washrooms, we did have, I think, three rounds of, of the expressions of interest that went over were cap trail only, uh, or two rounds were cap trail only, and once we were getting dimin, diminishing results on anybody even interested, we opened it up to the entire county, so the last two expressions of interest that were, were open and available to anybody in the county, and still haven't, I think, we've only received two or three swatches. But I think on the, on that note, I report washrooms, because, yeah, uh, in the community space, I'm open to place making additions, it's a bright spot.
Thank you, Counselor Long. Thank you, Counselor.
Uh, thanks, Dan, great program for sure, and, and certainly very much needed. Um, I was just wondering if you go back to the slide of the, um, the support you gave to each organization? Because I, it's, I don't think it's in our report, I just wanted to jog it down. Thanks.
Yeah. No, because that was, uh, yeah, that was, that came from our members in the county, that was the, the questions that we asked from the groups and so.
Deputy Warden, any questions?
Uh, yeah, just a quick one, Dan, and I'm, signage, I heard you say signage, I think that's critical, uh, I know a number of the locations, people don't realize that washrooms are there, so signage is critical. The also big thing is that a number of the ones north, most residents don't know that the county assisted. Uh, I was just wondering if this report can be put on our website so people know, because, uh, like I say, there's very little knowledge, uh, that.
I believe that's intended, I think there's communications where we created an informational rapport, that would be more needed for that sake purposes as well.
Perfect, no, great work.
And the signage, I would say, it comes with a one kilometer of sign, so there will be, we're working, public works down on positioning the sign so that you get a notice one kilometer, that there's a, of washroom.
Will the signage indicate, was Victoria County assisted with it, or is it just?
They have a notice on, on, on washroom.
Great, thank you very much.
Uh, ladies and back, any questions, and if you're interested?
No, just basically, for our concept, for our community concept, and you're not on the work destination here, Brad, and just to say, you guys really, uh, from the county perspective, I've had really from least to that, I have shown great representation. Washrooms are a central service, there's nothing, um, and especially where, during COVID, uh, a lot of retailers and lots of people were very comfortable opening their doors to, to the, to the washrooms, really had, you know, closed their doors to that, and really, not from that to that at all, for the safety of their staff, and and I really think that this is a very, very important sort of, and it's a central service, it's a very, very important, and not only at our, but in, in smaller communities, especially in the area of the deck, where people coming in for groceries, coming in for grocery stores, coming in for hospitals, coming in for, um, in a post office, this type of thing, uh, and they get to the deck, and you're hard not to imagine you're in a coffee, but not to live in a place used to washroom, that, that was pretty scary, so that other area, um, around the local center, that accessibility, with those washrooms, changing stations, and, um, actually, uh, special projects through BAFTA, there'll be an actual, um, water fill station there, that people will use for, when they will be planted, fill their water bottles, um, there, so they can drink water, that water too, so that's a nice addition to that comfort station, so, who goes to the county, good job.
Thank you, appreciate those comments. Loretto, did you have?
Yeah, I, I will, I'm not sure how far, Dan, is it, I'm not sure how far your program goes, but I'm wondering, two things. Uh, I know the parking parks in Cape Breton are shut down as much as a month earlier than on May night, and so that tastes like washing down the surface, uh, and, and, you have any problems about that? Because they're actually shut down before it's coming, right, after, right, especially.
It's interesting, kind of, beginning of the conversation, yeah, in December, and it was a whole team, right from head office and all, actually, you have an online call. Um, we did discuss, um, parking parks, but not only the washing side, the parking availability, and, uh, parking parks.
I was about to say, right, the parking, right?
It was usually in line, not those parking parks. At least the parking areas, we did do some of those areas, so we had a really great conversation, they were very responsible to a lot of ideas, the challenge is, of course, especially in the scale of the parking lot resources, mainly primarily focused on day use, or not day use parks, it's on the overbacks. They had such standards of their, their parks that do overnight visitations, which are very good areas.
Yeah.
They do not have a, they don't think about a ten-year plan on day use parks, it's maybe something that's not really improving and developing unless it's some content that I hired. Uh, so there is, we are, it's a building on a plan, we have their laundry accommodations coming up, the way they do, and day use parks and the access to them, and how they get used in possible ways for the future. Uh, I do too, like, when there's conversations now, probably, obviously, you try to have a shot at goods on the, but yeah, those are key parts, um, for washing facilities.
And the, the other question, I have a really, same question, one of the reasons they gave me closing the effort was because Barbies and Chalmers were using the jumping stations and filling up the. It's the thing, like, looking at daily dogs, like, there's nothing, you know, this goes, unless you're standing through the park, there's nothing.
Yeah, I think, uh, we do look at that from, there's two places that I think we've identified, you know, you saw that, as I was trying to, right, um, maybe they are, but not very indeed. Um, and then, but that's how I heard, is the reason they, they increase the hours, it comes down to the season, they're prepared in the name, and they have one area, they've got a, they've got a test pilot for the next year on expanding their operating hours, but they said the dollar value is switching back, so they'll keep the hours open, so they're not even considering it. I, 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 yeah, I'm not sure how that would work, and I can't double-check other cap, so then, probably, so I will say.
So the problem is, I will say hello there, I do for emergency stations. We're doing parks this year.
Thank you very much. And just to wrap up, I think I heard your report and I can tell you that every week I hear compliments and similar to what Kathy said of that was Washington here. It's been a very positive move. So with that, the report, the next stages of this program, hopefully be as successful as this one has. Thank you. I'm going to take a 10 minute break and read the, that's four. So next, next item up on council meeting is minutes from council meeting December 11th. Those minutes are circulated to you. Were there any errors or omissions in that, in those minutes? Hearing none, we will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated. So move? Move by the deputy warden, second by counsel.
Whoever.
Counselor Longbow, on the favor.
Aye.
Contradicted, motion's carried. So we can, for the CAO's report, follow up on that. It's been circulated to you. You wish to highlight, entertain any questions or comments. I'll turn it over to me Andy.
Yep. So I've sent you my report, the whole action items that have been addressed from prior council sessions. Just a couple of other things that I wanted to know that I didn't have in there, but just came out about. We're looking at possibly doing some budget engagement and we're looking at doing a survey, sending a survey out. We'd like to have a quick turnaround on it. So just letting you know that it's something that we're probably going to do in communications for some community major.
That's to residents' excellent, is what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
So the report is forwarded to you. You had mentioned some of the highlights. Any questions or comments in regards to the report? I have just one. We, Deputy Warden and Counselor Longbow referenced properties that had illegal dumping on those properties, over Smoky.
Oh, over Smoky, yes.
Tell us, Counselor Ward.
On the other one, the other end.
You had one, you had a property as well. So we sent a letter to Department of Environment and if you recall, one of the representatives said that they handled that. We haven't heard a response. So we sent it to the local office, I think. So just thinking it would be appropriate to send a letter to the individual that said that they were responsible for illegal dumping and see if that generates any interest on behalf of the park. If you're okay with that, it's your district's.
I am, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Just one other thing for the...
Sure.
Thank you. One other thing for the report. The water bills went out. That issue for little areas with some rainfall calls or?
I haven't heard that there's been any.
No.
All right. So we've dispersed with minutes and CAO's report. We're going to move on to district concerns. Let's start with the deputy ward.
Uh, luck here. No real problem. I'm just wondering, did you ever receive a response back from Parks Canada, Gulf North, or the Minister of Environment in regards to the county laws? Did you ever receive anything back?
We did. We got a letter from Blair Park. And I think that's been circulated a bit more than I've gone.
No, I haven't.
Sorry. We will send that out. I'll send to Blair Park.
Okay. Yep. Great. We appreciate it. I know a couple of other councils are going to bring this up, but just getting a number of calls in regards to the assessments that came out. And I'm just wondering if, I'd like to make a motion that we invite PBSC maybe to come to council and maybe do some explaining. The biggest complaint I'm hearing is just, of course, the high assessments. My, myself was 32.8%. But what people don't understand is why one house can go up and the neighbors don't, or there's different things. So I just wondered if they come to council, maybe explain a little more information for residents, because they are quite high. And I'll make that a motion.
That's a motion that's been made by the deputy warden. Do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Counselor McNeil, all in favor?
Aye.
Contradicted, motion's carried. Request.
The only thing, I just want to send out a huge congratulations to the Inish Mobile Club and the Cabot Mobile Club. They finally broke through the trail from, I think it's the old dam out to the top of Smokey and then into the top of Ski Lodge. So they've actually mulched the trail and a lot of skidoo's have already started. It's still under construction. Can't stress that enough. There are some bridges that still need to win, some culverts need to win. But from all reports that I'm hearing, the people have already just blown away by some of the scenery. That's on this trail, overlooking some of the valleys and then to the ocean and stuff like that. So and also a lot of, a number of ones already going into the top of Ski Lodge, take the bound of the down, have something to eat and go back up. So I'm hearing rave reviews of that also. But I also want to thank Dan, our manager of Recreation and Tourism. He's been very instrumental in getting this trail done and assisting the clubs. And I just like to say thank you to his work and let's hope we can keep going in that direction. And that's it. Thank you.
Dan, you missed that. That's, sorry. I'll let you know later, but we agree. Y'all agree.
Counselor Longbow, districts and concerns.
I don't really have any district concerns. I just had some really great news. I was at the SAB meeting and Dave Williams came to our meeting. He's worked with natural resources and productive areas and he's semi-retired, but he, he was supposed to be retired, but they haven't found a replacement. So he's filling in until they do. But he informed us that the federal government has come through on funding for the North River Falls Trail, which it's a huge amount of work from all the storms. Like there's a lot of damage and they asked him to go in and assess what needed to be done. And it was quite a big job and the government and the federal government said that they're covering all of it and they're going to fund all that. And it was just awesome news because it was the biggest falls in Nova Scotia. And I know SAB, Marion Wilson, and a lot of people have been lobbying for that. And I brought to council, I first came in, it was like a few years ago, but I'm just so happy that it's finally happening. And then there also, we have a trail by the church in Bearaswag, I guess. It's the Red Island Trail. And they're also, the federal government's going to do a big job there because years ago, when the Oxford Paper Company was logging in the area, they rerouted the river and it goes through the Red Island Trail. And now it's causing a lot of problems in the river. So they're actually going to undo it and put it back the way nature had it in first place. And that's also a big job that their federal government's going to do. So we're very happy. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much for the recording. Good news and hold on. Counselor McNeil?
Thank you, Warden. Just a couple of items. Just one item I want to bring up for public works. It's an ongoing, for the last three years, Nova Scotia. Ottawa Brook property of 1909, Ottawa Brook, it's been flooding now for about three years, every rain. And I talked to Steve McDonald about the situation. The owners, basically, when it rains, it floods the driveway and they have to use a boat to get out. So the two of them, the two of them have medical issues and it's a, it's a real problem. And basically, they're monitoring the situation, they say, but monitoring is not working for the last two years. So something has to be done with that culprit there. I've been in touch with it. MLA keeps paying against Stephen McDonald on the situation. So hopefully something will be done in the next couple of months. Also, what Deputy Warden brought up about the property assessments, there doesn't seem to be any consistency at all in the property assessment. Neighbors of mine, their assessment was about 35%. Our property was about 6%. I can see it's through our neighbors, they're all there. So we're glad that we have a DVC, just to explain what's going on. That's it.
Thank you. And we're going to move to Counselor McCallum.
Thank you, Warden. I don't have really any concerns. Just to let you know, 409 Margaret McPhee moved the 109 to the trail. So it's going to be another party. They've sent a card. They're asking for people wants to buy one. And we hear about passing for John McPhee. She doesn't buy it at all. We was talking regarding the emails about, I think the council person say, maybe each day we could do something for her. Just, I don't know. Saying, I'm hearing that today, we're celebrating, right? So I don't know. So just talk of position for her. And that's it.
Thank you very much. And just with Margaret McPhee, some of you may remember nine years ago, she came to council on her 100th birthday. She's an amazing lady and she must be one of the oldest Nova Scotia residents. And just ask that if she has a Victoria County card. They want to do 109 cards for her 109th birthday. So before you leave today, if we had that card, if I keep signing, we would send it from council. So just with that, so thank you for bringing that up. Counselor McDonald?
Yes, thank you, Warden. Just three things this afternoon, just to, same as what Deputy Warden spoke of and Counselor McNeil, with property assessments, same thing in Cape Law area. Most places, their assessments in the last five years have gone up between some are 60,000, some are over 110,000. There's no consistency there. Basically, they're driving people under homes. That's the easiest way to say it, right? That's, there's, there's still not an understanding of who is issuing. People are confused with tax bill versus the assessments for property values. Because I had people come in, they keep saying, well, as the county raises their tax bill. They don't understand that the assessment value comes from the province. But the tax rate, basically, is staying the same the last 10 years. It went up one cent, I think since I was two cents. And before that was 10 years prior to that, it hadn't come. So it's actually a tax rate staying the same, the assessment values keep going up. So it would be great if we could get them to come, really nail down what their formula is for property assessments. I tried to figure this out. I'm lost when it comes to that. Secondly, I had a local gentleman in the area just in Florida, in the past, where they used to have a, I guess, a dumping station for sewage treatment through septic systems. Now, he said he would be entertaining the possibility of starting his own sewage removal, excepting tank service within North of Smokey area. But he was wondering why there is no, or what was the reason that it was taken out originally. So I went back and investigated the minutes 2006, seven. And was it an environmental reason? Like what was the reason that it was? And is that something that could be entertained or is that?
If I were the gentleman, contact Department of Environment.
That's the best.
Climate change in Sydney, there's all kinds of investigations around it. Previous site that we developed in and it's no longer used. And the roads have changed around since the operation of that facility.
And just to say, is all sewage now taken to?
Is all sewage asked for, is free stuff.
And is there one for Victoria County?
No, there's none in Victoria County.
There's none?
There's one for Hawksbury, there's in South City.
Yeah. So I'll just pass it on. I just wasn't sure what the answer was for that. Thirdly, is our friends in Old Scotia Power for residential hotels. I passed my concern around earlier with the gentleman from my area who has been adamantly trying to get his service hooked up since late September. And just last week during a storm, it was guaranteed a hookup day, like the province went on the emergency standby with the storm coming. So I understood that. So he's done all the scoping, everything's been done. Electrics has been there. Everything's paid. Vermins are done. Still no, no hookup. But oddly enough, the night of the storm, his power was interrupted on his road. And the next day, there was two crews that come down and hook up the service, power service to his residence. But the building, the question that he needs hooked up, they couldn't do it because it's a separate department. So then, to expound story short, today he was supposed to get hooked up. And I just, just chatted momentarily ago and said that they never showed up. And they didn't even call to tell them that, that he wasn't getting hooked up. So I just have to bring it. I think you've had this issue in the past. What is, what are we supposed to do here? This is like since late September. It's just not making any, like to use the word about making sense, but.
Yeah. So we've contacted Old Scotia Power to get some dates for them to come to council. So those questions will be addressed sooner or later.
Here. Can I just make a suggestion? I think in the beginning, we should send a letter today, just saying, we have residents that are waiting in excess of three months for residential hookup and it's unacceptable. So I don't.
I'm just wondering if a letter to UARB would be one of those.
Yes.
Also.
Maybe CC, to see if they're into that.
Yeah. Right. Yes, I just, I provide a, they answered back promptly. They were very good. And they said that they looked into it and they have gentlemen's residents, but on the list ASAP and still.
Yeah. And I think, and we got a comment for, I think in some areas, we've had a lot of bad weather and storm watch, et cetera, et cetera. But even at that, four months is, well, we have reasonable expectation. You had a comment.
Yeah, just as Counselor McDonald brought it up, I had the situation which I described earlier. They finally did get hooked up for Christmas, but the dates they were originally given were this week, January 24th, I believe it was. So like you say, it's unacceptable. A street light, you know, a simple street light since September, step up, maybe ordered that street light. Not a word or a sound about it. So I think we write the letter and get them to visit and, you know, they're just not servicing their customers. And I got my bill this week and I kind of forgot that the rates were up. You know, you look at the rate of electricity now from what it was before the change was made. So anyway.
So you're making that motion, Counselor McDonald? Do you have a second for that, please?
I have a second. And you've got a second.
Deputy Warden?
Oh, and I sort of, I understand my part, you're CC the UARB on this.
And you want to refer to the details?
Yes.
Yep. With the permission of the home.
Correct.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
No. Thank you. Counselor Ward?
To go along with Nova Scotia Power, had residents complaining about the transformer keeps flipping or whatever the switch needs to be replaced. And they've been on the list for a long time, too. Other things, I just had a sanding issue on one of the roads that was taken care of. I contacted Mr. McDonald. Ambulance talk is a big thing and we have meetings in, in place for that to talk to, try to talk to the appropriate people. I've had a couple of calls on reckless driving and I spoke to Staff Sergeant White, Voice today. And he's going to, to speak to the RCP in Inish for me. And that's all I have for District Eight. Seven, sorry. I don't even know what district I'm in today. Sorry, District Seven.
Let's address those issues in District Eight.
We'll take care of mine next time.
Along with something.
All of them.
Do we know the districts, uh, my problem. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Warden. Just wanted to double check on the minister, the letter to the minister held regarding the full of the residents, the doctors. So, okay, thank you. NSBI has covered. The last launch and learn session we had at Big River was last Friday. And Paul Licking was the presenter on, guess what? Furniture, community gardens and so on. And there really seems to be an interest in setting up community gardens. So I know there's one at Bedak. Where is the one in your district two?
Is there?
Community.
There is a community garden in North River that's very successful.
Yeah. I'd like to talk to maybe some of the people that are involved in, you know, look for bid files or so.
Yeah. Maybe they can come speak at one of your breakfasts or things.
Yeah.
Dennis Law.
Okay. I've also had some interest in seniors housing. And I did phone Professor Horton just to kind of, you know, get his take on maybe maybe the topic, maybe setting up a meeting. But there seems to be some interest in seniors living maybe in a four unit complex or something in a common room. But there seems to be some, um, interest in seniors living maybe in a, like a four unit complex or something in a common room, you know, that whole concept of the whole community. But anyway, that's, that's something of a, of a better for now. Um, the, uh, roster and main part, uh, the plan to start the work, I think, on the work as, as soon as possible. And, uh, community safety, uh, discussed with, uh, Staff Sergeant Weiss earlier. And, uh, you know, I think it, it, there's no easy answers to that. It's a complicated, uh, situation. But I guess we have to try to figure out some ways to make their residents feel. And like you said, I have no reason to dispute it. He gave us safest here in any other country was a candidate, so I mean, that says a lot right there. Uh, we do get the media reports, of course, we blow everything up and it all makes it sound as if we're all doomed and everything. But anyway, I think it's something we should keep on the table. Uh, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Um, District Three disappeared quickly. Um, it's my understanding fiber ops coming to Victoria County. I understand it's not being offered in the deck.
What?
My understanding of that, but we already have some sort of, don't ask me detective skills, but we have some type of fiber out now, it seems out maybe.
Cable?
Cable. And as a result of that, it's, uh, I understand that it may not be available in the deck because we have that. Um, it's kind of interesting because the switching station that they have to do this is in the deck. So, uh, I would just like a letter to Dell, find out if they're even, uh, they're trying to do the village in the deck or just the surrounding area. Because it's my understanding it's going to go down today, it's going to go with the show, but it's not going to turn on the deck. I just would like some clarification of that, so just make a little chat to send a letter to that.
So you have a motion on the floor, you have a second for that motion?
Just want to dig ahead before we vote, maybe, um, send that letter to Bill of Scotia Two and Kevin Quarr. Kevin, is it in charge or project?
Perfect. Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, you have a second for that motion?
Second.
Second by Council Longbow, all favor?
Aye.
Controined, yeah. Motion passed.
Thank you, and just, uh, final item that's not necessarily District concerned, but I need a little direction on, uh, determining this today, but who is interested in going to the F T M uh, in her conference showing. So.
Yeah. Well, uh, Warden, I know it's, like, I didn't go to the last one, so if nobody else wants to go, I'll forfeit my funds for myself to, to let Fraser go.
Okay. But Fraser would be attending this.
Sorry, this is the, uh, team.
So the Calgary is.
Morning, I'm good morning, I could see the town manager is interested. Yes, sir.
Oh. So three, four, five. Thank you, thank you for your generous offer, Council Warden. Um, so we have, we'll make arrangements, uh, to do that. Are you sending five? We, uh, how many are we going to send? Do we wish to send the five that are interested in attending?
May I ask, when is it?
It's the end of May. So we have five, we normally send four, we can send five this year, we have sent less than four on different occasions as well. So we need a motion to send five, Council, so we decide to go ahead.
Totally.
So by Council McNeil, you have a second, please?
Second.
Deputy Warden, all in favor?
Aye.
Controined, motions carried. Uh, I don't have anything else for my district, uh, so district concerns are done, correspondence have been sent out.
Yes, thank you.
With the, and we just received that letter from.
From North Area.
Oh, sorry, I've seen that the last.
I'm in a long, long.
Okay, bylaws and policy discussion, determine over here, Steph?
Both in mind.
All right. So we've received, we've, we've put the ask out for you to bring forward your top five bylaw that you'd like, uh, lift out. Uh, bylaws and policies. We do have a list of those that were sent in. Um, so today we are just interested in having you let us know which ones you want us to focus on so that we can bring to the media the holes where we amend or change or review or make a new one or.
Just purposely, it's on there just to show what we, what we have. I mean, whatever you guys sign.
So we're looking for from you which ones we should start with as our top five and, um, then let's start out.
So I'm, sorry, I can't see that. Is that any particular order or is that how?
It's alphabetical order and it's alphabetical order.
Josh, can you make that a little bit deeper?
It's an alphabetical order and it's just the list that somebody sent in. Whatever I got from counselors who sent them in, I just put them at, unless those were duplicated, just to show, for example, a couple you were interested in.
Why don't we just take the five that are duplicated, start with? That's a way, so, so auctioneer feathers, dog control, minimum housing standards, solid waste management, good store.
You and I will be extinguished.
I'm here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and you have depressed that, I, I put in community standards because I think that's, uh, something we should have in place. And I mentioned last time, especially with a lot of new people moving in and, uh, you know, the rules. Uh, I, I think we should review the Dog Control Act because there may be ramifications with that benches application, um, committee. Uh, the electronic voting is just, because this is election year, I think we should have a look at it in the solid waste management and I read the auctioneers, peddlers, I think the name of it just throws it, but it sounds like it's from the Wild West or something. I don't know when they first put it in, but anyway, those are, those are my.
I think starting point could start with the top five, a good idea. And some of them, Fraser would deal with, some of them are getting rid of, so the next one.
They're not really the top five, they're, they're just duplicated, so they're ones that somebody said, two people said.
Two people said.
And they're bylaws, both of them, yes.
So let's take those five.
So there's only four that are duplicated.
So we go down, we go down the first one, automatic, automatic auctioneers, peddlers.
I have that one.
Dog control and it's electronic voting and external organizations, that's probably the five, right?
No, the external organizations, it only allows.
I have that one too, but I didn't send any in.
Oh, so we got auctioneers, we got building, dog, quite a good feeling for.
It's only the ones.
Okay, auctioneers, dog control, minimum housing standards, solid waste management.
Solid waste management.
Those are the five.
Start with.
Yeah. Okay, very good.
Okay, so, you know, if we switch to credit. Okay, so none of these are duplicated, but there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight that were, uh, so seven we had so far and then eight was added there. So, um, wondering what your thoughts are on this? If you want to narrow it down to five, if you want to narrow it down to three, you want to move it at eight.
I had tax and water collection on my list, which I did not send in. So that would be a duplicate had I sent it in. Um, I also had electronic meeting.
Soon are.
So what's the reason, not difficult, you mean, we're doing five files, by.
Bylaws?
Policy, bylaws. What's the reason of the amount of two five?
I'd say just kind of review them more and then, and see if there's any change going on. Make, we may not want to make changes. Like I said, with the electoral voting, I think we should look at it because this is an election year. Make sure everybody knows we have the same information. I, I don't think we, you know.
Sorry.
Be there for a while.
So unfortunately, the electronic voting wasn't there twice, it's not on your list. So you're, you're actually going by just because somebody said it rather than the priority of them.
Well, I thought we'd go back and do the rest of them then.
You will, but that could be a year's time.
Oh, that could be years' time, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Bylaws.
Social media is important after all the, the changes. And I changed that, I worked from nineteen ninety six, like, I was, when they signed that, it's very old.
Yes.
So I think it's changing a lot and, and that experience of this year, we have, we have to look at that.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that. And I think we've made some subtle changes to the expense policy that we can reflect very quickly, we're ready to hit just tiny provincial mileage rate, a couple of just minor things. So if we take social media, we take municipal travel expense.
We should like to because we have all, we still, we're still asking for and we're back for all the time, we have a lot of policies today and we decide, I don't know, it's going to, it's your life. Come on, all the time in discussions.
Streetlights, you want to put on those?
So we can leave this list and then just start working on it, yeah.
That's another part, meeting too, like there was differences that we brought in that, like, say, one person wasn't eight. Say, one person wasn't at a meeting but attended it electronically. Yeah, I think if you said that they're now allowed to vote, that's not in the policy. So things like that have to be looked at.
Yes.
And even where you're supposed to be able to see everybody's face and you can't do that with teams. Let's put them in that, it looks like a bunch of clams up there.
So, okay, so we'll deal with these and one thing that we have to sort out is, um, we good days and bad days with, uh, streaming meetings, is that something we want to continue or is that something now that we post COVID?
So, um, we've looked around to other areas around the province and there are very few that are still live streaming. Um, if you're going to choose to do the live streaming, we want to do a good job, which we haven't been doing at least the last few, um, but we also want to do a good job. So we're going to have to make an investment in some equipment and, um, the setup of them if we are going to continue doing them. So that may tie into the electronic meeting, one, but it's a question on if you still want to have electronic meetings. We're probably still going to have, um, presenters coming in virtually, um, but it's a, it's a, I think we wanted to discuss that today, if that's something that we want to continue.
Yeah, and I would look at it from the point of view as well, where, where the last eight, nine months with this mandate, maybe we have a new council decide whether or not they want to invest in, uh, the equipment required to do as Lee Anne says, a good job. Maybe in the meantime, we go back to the format if we need. I think we're on the board, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just want to say, maybe it's just me, but I find it very difficult to hear some of the conversations that go on there. I think the, our acoustics is gone and not, you know, whether we have to go back to microphones and a, and a central speaker or not. But I'm sure the people at the back are not hearing a lot of the conversations. And, uh, you know, it's just, I don't think that's acceptable at this day and age. Maybe, you know, we're playing for the YouTube crowd, but we have a crowd here too. So maybe we should look at that as part of the whole.
Maybe something internal.
Exactly, yeah.
Anybody else have any thoughts or anybody opposed to not going?
Just with the electronic meetings and think about the point that we can't go backwards. Uh, we can't go backwards on electronic meetings, they're, they're basically here to stay. But you, you know, you'll have to look at the policy and see what can change.
Yeah. Well, maybe what we can do in the meantime is, is just ask, uh, C A O to look into what equipment will cost. That's not to say that we will invest in it or not, but at least consent of them and then the next council decides to stay on it. Spend that kind of money to provide improved meetings and online meetings and that would be their decision.
Especially with counselors traveling two hours and some weather issues and stuff like that.
What's your opinion of our electronic meetings?
I think we're talking, so, so the policy is on an electronic meeting, whichever way that it's held and we get voting and all those things. But I believe you were also talking about virtual piece or the live streaming piece of council and then even council. All, um, so that's the discussion that we're also interested in?
Yeah, there's two pieces to it, sorry if I confuse it. To me, I'm looking at the electronic, strictly the electronic stream or live streaming of the meetings. We, Lee Anne says we haven't been overly successful doing that. Not sure of it, anybody else, but I've received complaints every time after council that the call may sound unable to connect any one of the member reasons. So clearly, what we're doing is not as good as it could be. And in the meantime, we might continue offering, uh, inferior product or, or it's a census to change it so that we can purchase proper foot. So wherever we go, we can live stream.
Right, I think like a full study, we can, we can go back to say, no, no more. Like, we, we have to invest for the equipment, uh, go about it, what the perception of volume and the string. People knows what's going on and cover that, so it's part of the communication you have to do with the public. So I'm free to just, just to check out the best and how much equipment, you know, now it's kind of a large facility, it's a, which is right. So make a difference. Yes, we have to go with electronics, we can just, we can start it.
I'm curious if, uh, it's any better now, now, because now we're streaming on YouTube, right, instead of Facebook, is that correct? So maybe it's better, I haven't seen it myself, but I don't know if it's coming across any better on YouTube than it is on Facebook.
It's not going to do with the platform, it's, it's our, it's our good platform, it's not going to do with the platform that the video is posted on.
So just to kind of tidy this one up, so are we saying that we would want, we need to look into or staff to look into, um, getting an estimate of whatever cost to get proper electronic equipment so that we can improve the quality of our council sessions, electronic?
Yep, that's right.
And in the meantime, are we going to continue, uh, using the format that we are as far as, uh, streaming our meetings?
I think Council McNeil, I don't know, if, if, if we go back, I mean, you know, it may not be perfect as it is, but I think there's still a number of people watching. So, you know, if we decide, if we decide that we're not going to do that, you know, I think it'd be.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that is go and then also to get estimates to how much it costs to improve it.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good.
How is that a motion?
Um, sure, can I put it in a form of a motion? That's been moved by Council McNeil.
Staff working to, for electronic meetings.
Yeah, and I think ultimately, all of it in that is also equipment to improve the, the, within the, within this meeting itself, that's a good point. Um, do we have a second for that, please?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Question?
Questions for God, all in favor?
Aye.
Controined, motion carried. Thank you, we were just looking for direction on that. Um, I lost my, I'll speak to discussion, so we're good, we're just going to follow through on that. Correspondence has been.
Because except for that, that.
Yeah, which we just asked, we just asked.
Sorry, that's what I was thinking, that's just what we have.
Meeting reports.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, uh, just, uh, for the minutes we have already here, it's very kind of fancy. And we're talking about, um, about a motion for to check out the budget for a new paper, so I don't know, you, we have to make a motion here or?
Uh, yes, we have to make a, a motion to allow enough to, for budget considerations to purchase it.
Okay, I'll make a motion for that.
I believe that it was to look in the, uh, the current budget, see if.
The current, yeah, yeah, no, the next one, this one, yeah, yeah, change some money for, and then we're fine.
Five seconded.
Thank you, it's moved to seconded, any further? Thank you, it's moved to seconded, any further discussion? So I just think for those that, but we were all here for that discussion, great, thank you. Um, meeting reports, question, sorry?
No, no, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary minded, motion's carried, thank you, it's getting late. Um, questions from the public? Anything online? I, I get two, two second, see, was there anybody, anybody come in online or?
Is there a pile?
Yes. So, okay, sorry, shows you what I know of technology. You had a question in the back there, man?
You, me?
Yes, you.
Yes, yes. Uh, I'd like to know how I get myself onto the correspondence section. Is that a question that's standing so behind, I've not been answering?
Um, well, I, I would say this to you, if I'm getting, uh, delaying, uh, leaving any longer, just resend it to us referencing that you made the request to re, resubmitting it as of today, send it to Lee Ann and myself, and we will take a look at it and see what we do with it, okay? Anything else come to council tonight? Our next meeting is February twenty, two, two P M, and we have committed the full February fourth.
Yeah.
Two P M.
Two P M.
It's on the calendar.
It might be different.
Very different. Some of us will be away or on their way back, I'll be away till two, you'll be away as well?
Actually, it's not a good, all of the fifths, so.
No, I won't, sorry. Sorry.
We're just. And all that, it has, uh.
Do we have a forum?
Sure.
Do we have a forum on the?
Yeah, we'll have a forum, Norm, that's.
Is it fair?
In the, in the.
Better if it is a Monday, at two o'clock.
No, Tuesday.
At two o'clock, maybe the whole.
It's Tuesday.
It's in your calendar.
Oh, it's Monday.
Fifth is a Monday.
Yeah, that's what.
Sure.
Also, the twenty is February, it's on a Tuesday, many of the hall is on the fifth, and that's a month. Also, I'll hang out there.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Aye, so.
And the votes are till P M and we're here, please.
Also, I'll hang out there.